...meeting of the Wheat Ridge City Council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for December 10th, pardon me, 2018. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Monica Durand?
Here.
Zachary Urban?
Present.
Denise Hoppy?
Present.
George Pond?
Present.
Leah Dozeman?
Here.
Kristy Davis, Tim Fitzgerald, and Larry Matthews are excused.
Thank you. And we have a quorum. If you are here tonight to speak to or participate in item number two, which is approval of the sale of designated parkland at 38th and Johnson, we are going to postpone that hearing. That item requires a vote of the full council, and we don't have a full council tonight. So we're going to entertain a motion at the proper time to move that until January the 14th, 2019. So I just wanted to let everybody know in case they were there for this, for that hearing. We will go to citizens' right to speak. If you are here to speak on any item not on the agenda, this is the time to speak. And if you would please come to the podium when I call your name and adjust the microphones so that you can, we can hear you clearly, we will go from there. And our first speaker is Lorraine Berger, and Kami Fisher is on deck. Or actually, did you want to speak later in the...
We were in the process of deciding that.
Okay.
I decided I was a little bit nervous to go first.
Okay. Whoever would like to go first, if you would give us your name, spell your last name and give us your address.
All right. I'm Kimary Marchese. K-I-M-A-R-Y. Marchese is M-A-R-C-H-E-S-E. My address is 10400 West 38th Avenue, Wheat Ridge, Colorado, 80033.
Thank you.
All righty. So I am part of the Victorian Society of Colorado. I'm also a part of the Wheat Ridge Historic Society. And I own the 1872 property, Prospect Valley Hospitality. It brought me here to Wheat Ridge 18 years ago. And so for 18 years, I have been showing off beautiful historic destinations all over the state, but not Wheat Ridge. And we have the beautiful Richard Hart Estate. And we would love to do an event there, but it's very expensive. And when we took a tour over a year ago, they said that you are the wonderful people who could decide to add a nonprofit discount to the fee structure for the Richard Hart Estate. So that's what we're here for today, is to ask you guys to consider maybe three times a year or something, offering a very substantial discount for nonprofits. We are a social and educational club. President Lincoln here will say a little something later along the lines of the educational piece. But we believe that it would be a benefit mutually, not to the city as well as us. Obviously us for the discount, for the city because we have members, almost 300 on our email list, and then there are those that consult the website that are not on the email list. They come from all over the state. They come from Wyoming, they come from Arizona, New Mexico, sometimes even the East Coast for our events. So they'll stay in Wheat Ridge, they'll eat in our restaurants, and it'll kind of put us on the map a little bit. And then the people who are there also will know about the Richard Hart Estate for other rentals. So we just wanted to thank you for considering a great discount for nonprofits occasionally each year for the Richard Hart Estate. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And did you want me to introduce the other members?
If you would, please.
Okay. I'm the volunteer treasurer for the Victorian Society, the president, George Fisher. We have co-secretaries Fran Shilt and Janet Tucker. This is member Lorraine Berger. And then we have John and Pam Vole, also known as President, and Mary Todd Lincoln. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just hoping to add to her remarks, as the Victorian Society of Colorado... do you want my name and stuff first?
Please.
Besides Abraham Lincoln, my name is John Vole, spelled with a V-O-E-H-L. I'm actually a Douglas County resident in Littleton. We are invited all over the state by different municipalities. We, our members have given fashion shows, demonstrations of Victorian dancing that is historically accurate. Our members actually own a cannon and fire it at 4th of July events, like at Clement Park and Jeffco, as part of the 1812 overture. So we do a lot of events, and we have not had the privilege of having a Victorian ball in the Wheat Ridge area as we have had throughout the state. So this was our request to have a discount for nonprofits so that we could afford to enjoy the beauty of your Richard Hart mansion. And on a larger scale, our country has a long history of government entities partnering with nonprofits. If you allow me to go back to my time period in the Civil War, the U.S. Sanitary Commission started out of a need to serve the needs of soldiers on the battlefield that the government couldn't take care of them completely. And that organization changed its name shortly after the Civil War and became the Red Cross through the efforts of Clara Barton. So we appreciate you considering our request, and we hope it's granted so that we can enjoy a mansion in your fine city. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had a question for Mrs. Lincoln.
Yes, yes, sir.
Other than that, how was the play?
Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Lorraine Berger. Do you need me to spell my name?
No, ma'am.
No, okay. I actually live in Boulder, and I'm a member of this group and other historical reenactment groups, not many. But even though the world has changed dramatically since Queen Victoria's reign, I think history is no less important. I think if we don't know where we came from, we can't really understand where we are. So I'm speaking not only in support... well, I want to speak, of course, in support of the Victorian Society having financial access to the Richard Hart mansion, but also other nonprofits. But again, I'm a huge fan of historical education through fashion history, if you will. I thought, I think, I've taken various classes up at the university on the history of Western fashion, and I think if history were taught that way, we all might have remembered it a bit better because it reflects the times we have gone through and the struggles of different peoples against each other, and even the gender relationships. So thank you so much for considering our request.
Thank you. Well, thank you. Thank you for coming. We appreciate your input into our meeting. That's all the people that I had signed up to speak on citizens' right to speak. If there's anyone here who didn't get to sign up, would you like to speak, you may do so at this time. And I don't see any, so we will move on with our agenda. Item number one is our consent agenda. Mr. Pond, would you please introduce item number one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number one, consent agenda. A, motion to approve monthly payments to Kaiser Permanente for January through December 2019, membership billing not to exceed a total of $2,420,526. B, resolution number 70-2018, approving amended and restated intergovernmental agreement to establish the West Metro Drug Task Force. C, resolution number 71, 2018, approving a memorandum of understanding between the city of Wheat Ridge and the United States Secret Service for a membership in the Colorado Electronics Crimes Task Force.
Thank you. A motion would be in order.
I move to approve consent agenda items A, B, and C.
Second?
Motion made, and second by Mr. Urban. Is there any discussion on the motion? And I wanted to say one thing, that on item number A, we have generally been approving payments to Kaiser permanently on a monthly basis at every meeting, and this will allow staff to make those payments throughout the year. Would the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Pond, would you introduce item number two?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number two, council bill number 34-2018, an ordinance approving the sale of designated parkland at the intersection of West 38th Avenue and Johnson Street, and in connection therewith authorizing execution of an agreement for said sale.
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier in the meeting, we require a full council to consider this, and so I'm going to ask Mr. Pond to give us a motion to postpone this item until the new year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to postpone item number two, council bill number 34-2018, until January 14th, 2019.
Second?
We'll give Ms. Dozeman a second on that. There's a motion and a second to postpone this. Is there any discussion on the motion? Will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Item number three, Ms. Dozeman, would you please introduce item number three?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to award a contract and approve subsequent payments to HDR Engineering, Inc., Denver, Colorado, in the amount of $1,344,394.91 for professional services for row acquisition services for the Wadsworth Boulevard Improvement Project.
Thank you. Ms. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on that?
Mr. Westburg is here this evening. He does have a PowerPoint if you'd like him to go through that, otherwise, or he can just answer any questions. So we'll leave that up to City Council.
Can you make us a quick PowerPoint?
We can't. I can't.
Okay. If you can make us a quick PowerPoint, that'll give our audience a little background on the information.
I couldn't get it to turn off the other night, so next time I'll come see you. So just really, really quickly tonight, we'll go through this, we'll just talk about the acquisition. I want to give you a really short, like, one slide update or two slide update on the funding, where we are, and then just a quick update on the schedules. Now that we've got a right-of-way consultant on board, we're starting to, these things are starting to gel a little better. So as was mentioned, the fee is just around $1.4 million. We're actually carving off $72,600 early. We're going to go ahead, because this consultant's been selected through our normal process, we're going to have them go ahead and order the title commitments, like, starting tomorrow. We're trying to get our funding situated for that so that we can get those things started early, because we won't be able to issue notice of proceed until the 1st of January, and title commitments are a long lead item for us on this and sort of have to be done first. So we're trying to get that started early to help save us some time on our schedules. You know we're about a year and a half behind on this project. So what's left of that in this actual contract tonight is the $1.3 million number that's in the, that's in the council action form. Funding sources is 80% of this will come out of our CIP budget, which will then be reimbursed by CDOT with the federal grant that we have, and then the other 20% will be paid for out of the two E-funds. We have three, what we're calling definite full acquisitions. There are three properties that we know we have to buy. There's just no way around it. There are five potential full acquisitions, properties that we hope to be, either be able to negotiate or engineer our way out of buying those fully and just be able to buy right-of-way along the front. And then depending on where those numbers land, we've got 56 to 61 partial acquisitions to do. So we've got a large number of things to do on this project because it's a mile and a quarter long. We've got almost seven acres of right-of-way that we need to buy, and then almost another three acres of temporary construction easements that we'll need to acquire along the corridor. Of those relocations, we've got relocations identified. If we do three full acquisitions, there's two business and one resident. And then if we end up with eight full acquisitions, we've actually got 16 businesses then to relocate in one resident, which is why we're going to try really hard to keep our number at three full acquisitions because it gets very, very expensive and time-consuming on those relocations. So this is, north is to the right on the screen, these are the eight potential full acquisitions that we've got, the ones that we for sure know. There's a little strip of land that was left behind here in front of O'Reilly's. Apparently when the O'Reilly's bought that site, they forgot to buy about 15 feet. And then the other one is Midas Mufflers here at the corner of 38th and Wadsworth. Our sidewalk will end up about five feet in front of their garage doors. We don't think they can continue to function as a muffler shop. And then Raleigh Baritos, which is, which is right here across from 41st, we're going to have 41st be a full intersection. We're going to build an east leg to that, and it literally becomes their drive-thru, so we don't think they can continue to function as a, as a restaurant. So those are the three that we've identified as full acquisitions. The other relocation we have is there's a residential property up here. We don't have to buy the entire property, but there are two houses on that property. We do have to take the house, the smaller house that's closest to Wadsworth. So that is what we're showing as the other relocation, even though it's not a full acquisition. So the early action items that we're doing on this, as I mentioned, we're trying to get the title commitments ordered to get those started. We've got like 66 of those to get done, and the title companies are all very busy in this real estate market we have. In January, we're going to come to council with our resolution to acquire right-of-way. That's basically where we as staff ask for council's permission to go out and buy the right-of-way. You have to tell us to do that by ordinance or by resolution. And in that resolution, we'll include the need or the ability to condemn property if necessary. That'll be a last resort, of course. We'll try to negotiate as many of these as we possibly can. One of the things that we're going to do as a design group right now is resolve whether those potential full acquisitions have to be full acquisitions or not. Then the other things that we're doing is we're trying to start early on those definite full acquisitions, as we mentioned, and then we're doing what are called scaled incentives. So those definite full acquisitions, if we know we have to buy Raleigh Baritos and Midas, it takes several months to negotiate those contracts, and then it takes several more months to get those guys relocated. So we want to get those started early so that that doesn't become our critical path at the end. And then we're using what are called scaled incentives, that if you're, if we figure out the value of the property is X, we're going to give you X plus a little bit more if you'll, if you'll jump on this first offer we make you. What that saves us, it saves us time, and time is money when you've got right-of-way consultants involved. And so our thought there is if we can, if we can get a bunch of these wrapped up right-of-way, then it gives us a lot more flexibility as we move forward. And so CDOT has embraced this in other projects, and so has FHWA, and it found it to be really successful in having the right-of-way process not become the thing that holds everything up and to get things moving as quickly as possible. So we're going to be looking at that kind of thing. And just a real quick reminder in our funding, we've got just over $39 million identified so far. We think this project is going to cost 45. So we've got a little bit of a gap of almost $6 million. We're going to be applying for another grant. Our first federal grant that we got back in 2014 actually stopped at 48th Avenue. It did not go all the way down the hill. Through this design process, environmental process, we determined we really need to go all the way down the hill and join into the two ramps there. And so we've priced that out at $6.6 million because we've got all that retaining wall work to do down there. And so we're looking to try to get a subregional tip grant and Transportation Improvement Program Grant in 2000, the part of the 2018 program, which we'll be applying for in early, early 2019. That call for project starts in January. So our environmental schedule is we hope to have the EA wrapped up in January. We're going to have our EA public hearing in late February. We hope to have the historical mitigation completed in April, and then have our decision document done hopefully in early June. And then construction plans, we have to have those completely wrapped up by early 2020. For right-of-way, we're going to be working on the right-of-way plans this spring, and then the fall, we hope to have those full acquisitions complete and the early acquisition, or the partial acquisitions completed then in early 2020. Again, our construction schedule, we're hoping to start in mid-2020. We think this thing will take about two years. So that's, that's what I've got for this one.
Thank you very much. Before I open this up to questions, I wanted to have public comment. I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this, but if you would like to speak on this, now's the time to do it. And I don't see anyone, so I'll open this up to questions from council. Looks like it was a pretty explanatory presentation. Thank you very much. This, then, Ms. Dozeman, if you would provide us with a motion on this item?
I move to award a contract and approve subsequent payments to HDR Engineering, Inc., Denver, Colorado, in the amount of $1,344,394.91 for professional services for row acquisition services for the Wadsworth Boulevard Improvement Project. Second?
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Durand. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. We will go to our next item. Mr. Urban, would you please introduce item number four?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to award a contract and approve subsequent payments to HDR Denver, Colorado, in the amount not to exceed $75,139 for professional services for right-of-way acquisition services for Ridge Road.
Ms. Goff, do we have another presentation?
Mr. Westburg is here with another short presentation.
This one's even shorter. So again, just talking about sort of our possible project list, this contract will be used for things other than what we're just talking about tonight. We'll come back with those fees later on, the fees associated with what we're talking about tonight, and then a quick update on the schedule. So we've shown this graphic several times. It shows the road projects that we're currently working on, which is 52nd Avenue from Ward Road to Tabor Street, and then Tabor Street from 52nd down to Ridge, and then Ridge from the city boundary back over to Tabor Street. Based on the direction we got from council last time, we're not doing the project 52nd east of Tabor Street. We had also, so the only thing we need right-of-way for with the work we're currently designing is for the Ridge Road piece. We had also talked with council last time about possibly pursuing, doing a project over just west of Parfitt Street. And Mr. Urban brought up a great question, is whether we can use two E-funds for that or not, and we have determined that we don't think we can. We think it's too far away. It's outside a reasonable walk shed and all those other things. And so we think it was a great question to ask, and right now, we would, as a staff, we'd recommend not pursuing that as a project this time just because we don't have funding otherwise identified in the 2019 budget for it. So thanks for pointing that out very, very early in the process, Mr. Urban.
You're welcome.
So that, so that we're not, we're not going after that one right now. So just a quick reminder, on Ridge Road east of Tabor Street, this is the five properties that we need right-of-way from. And because 52nd is no longer connecting, we're evaluating whether we need to change our street section from what we talked about last time back in November. What we talked about there was a two-lane road section plus bike lanes and then a detached sidewalk on the north side. With all of the traffic from that Arvada Development Haskins Station possibly using Ridge Road, we're thinking we might need to go ahead and do three lanes of traffic down there. If we do that, we'll do an attached sidewalk instead of a detached sidewalk. The bike lane would still provide a buffer for the pedestrians from the cars, and that way we'd only need maybe three to four to five more feet to get that third lane in. But I do think that third lane might become critical for us with the amount of traffic that we might now have on Ridge with, with 52nd not connecting. We're working with the consultant to figure that out right now, but we'll have that figured out pretty quickly. So this acquisition contract is a little cheaper than the last one. It's about 75 grand. We've only got five properties to deal with. There are a lot of things that make this easier. We think we can get by with evaluations, valuations, not appraisals and some different things like that. We're proposing that we do some cost sharing on Ridge Road for the, for the right-of-way and the construction costs. In our earlier conversation with Arvada, they had indicated that if 52nd doesn't go through, then it seems reasonable that we would need to participate in some of the costs for something else. So just because we like round numbers, we're going to propose to them a 50/50 split. We'll see how far that goes. We're actually meeting with their staff tomorrow with the city manager and Jefferson County staff and also the, the Arvada staff. Early action items, again, we'll come to you at that same meeting in January and ask for permission to go get right-of-way, including condemnation if absolutely necessary. Again, we'd, we'd hope it doesn't come to that point. And we'd also use scaled incentives here so that we try to motivate folks with a little bit of extra money to try to close early and just get this thing done. So the other thing that might come up as a part of this contract, that we will come back to you with the fees at a later date, would be the pedestrian bridge. We've got to cross the railroad tracks, which means we've got to get some permits and things from folks, and we've got to land on the RTD side. They've left room, but we still have to need some kind of an easement or something, and then possibly an easement or right-of-way acquisition on the other side, on the south side. And then also for the linear park, we need to have some right-of-way or easement in order to construct that. So we just this week got, or last week, got drawings, conceptual drawings on both the linear park and the pedestrian bridge, and so as a staff group, we'll be looking at those on Thursday and, and seeing how, how we're going to move forward with those also. So just a schedule, we're going to be working on plans that started back in November through April on the construction plans. We're working on the IGA with Jeff Con or Arvada right now. We hope to bring that to council in January. And then we're going to, in January and February, we're going to do some public outreach, small group meetings in late January, and then hopefully a public meeting, maybe an open house or a presentation kind of thing in early February with the public. We'd come back to council in February for a street with designation. We'd have to do all three streets because we're changing the widths of those. And then in January and February, we'll be working on right-of-way deeds and the pre-acquisition stuff. And then in March through May, try to get our right-of-way acquisitions done, and then hopefully get out to bid in June through July so we can start construction in August. If we can compress this schedule at all to start construction earlier this summer, we will certainly try to. It just all kind of depends on how the right-of-way process goes and how quickly we can get through everything else we've got. So that's all I've got on that one.
Thank you, Mr. Westburg. Once again, we'll go to public comment on this, and I have two people sign up to speak. First speaker would be Jeffrey Burge and Connie Burge on deck. If you'd like to come forward and speak. Thank you very much. Mr. Burge is going to pass, so Connie Burge.
I'd love to be super quick, super quick. Connie Burge, B-U-R-G, 5195 Swadley Street. And I would just, I want to thank you for being a council of integrity and agreeing to uphold the city commitments. I admire council and staff for their willingness to think outside the box and explore the creative solutions to address transportation issues that just might work out better for everybody in the long run. Thank you. We appreciate you voting to save our neighborhood, so thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't have anyone else from the public signed up to speak. If there's anyone else here tonight who would like to speak on this item, you may do so now, if you want to come forward to the podium. And I don't see anyone, so we will close the public comment. And now I will open the item number four up for discussion and questions from council. Ms. Dozeman.
Do we have an update from RTD on the G-line? Because I'm seeing us moving forward with construction, but I've received several emails from frustrated residents about the G-line, not only the testing, which is quite annoying because I can hear it all the way from my house, but also whether the train is actually coming.
We have not gotten a response back yet from RTD. They met with, RTD and DTP met on Tuesday of last week. I'm still waiting to hear back on the resolution of that. Actually, I may have gotten an email late this afternoon, which I haven't read yet, but, so, train will be coming. It's just we don't have a date yet.
Any further questions from council? Mr. Urban?
Mr. Mayor, as it relates to the south side along the tracks, is there any plans or way to put a sidewalk on that side of the street? Or why is, why is there no sidewalk on that side?
So there was a, there was a catalytic stunt a few, sorry, catalytic study done a few years ago with Dr. Cog's help that was done with Arvada, and Wheat Ridge participated in that. And it was determined, since there's nothing on the south side of the tracks as a destination or anything, that it, we just, the concern was a sidewalk, just what we use. You're going to have trains going by pretty quickly, just, just 15 or 20 feet away. And so, so we've never really shown any kind of pit facilities. We do have the bike, bike lane on the south side, so that's going to be down there, but we don't have any pit facilities on the south side for that reason.
And so is there any kind of city right-of-way on that RTD property, or what's our ownership, or how far is our...
So their, their fence actually comes onto city right-of-way a little bit, the fence. The catenary poles were at the very edge of, is my memory, the very edge of their right-of-way. And so to get that buffer, they actually, there was a roadside ditch there at one point. They built curb and gutter and then, and then flattened that area out and put the grab, the rock in there. So actually that fence is somewhat into our right-of-way a little bit. That was part of them to give their buffer that they need for those, the poles they've got. So...
And then as, as far as that, the gravel area, at any point, would we provide asphalt over that, or to make it otherwise more traversable, or is that something we're just not considering as it relates to...
Uh, it's not something we've really considered at all. Um, again, our thought was there's nothing on the south side. You've got, you know, a half mile between those, those crossings or something in there, and, and our thought was there's just not going to be anybody, anybody, there's any need for anybody to walk down there. Um, every place you can cross the tracks, if you live on the south side, there's, there's a signal there that will enable people to get across to the north side where these pit facilities would be.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions from, uh, council? Uh, Mr. Urban, a motion is in order.
I move to award a contract and approve subsequent payments to HDR Incorporated, Denver, Colorado in an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars for right-of-way acquisition services for Ridge Road.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Hoppy. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Duran, would you introduce item number five, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number sixty-nine dash two-zero-one-eight, a resolution approving an agreement with the Wheat Ridge Sanitation District regarding Twenty-Ninth Avenue Street improvements. Would you like me to read the issue, or do we have a presentation?
Are we going to have a presentation on this?
What would you prefer?
I would, I would, um, well, I always like to have, uh, uh, introductions made, but you know presentations may be, may be good too. So why don't we let them do the presentation?
Okay.
Okay. So, um, this is my little quick wire-oh-we-here slide. This is what it used to look like, and then they tore down one half, tore down the other half, and there's still not an updated aerial for me to use to show you what it looks like today, but it looks so much better out there today than it used to. I think most of us can agree on that. We'd originally started this project just a straight in Twenty-Ninth from the, in front of Denver Water, um, but Edgewater came to us and said, hey, we've got a project on the south side, can we go all the way to Kendall Street? And so now we're doing that. In May of this year, well in darn design, just two months before we were ready to go out to bid, Wheat Ridge Sanitation came to us and said, hey, we'd like to replace a piece of our sewer main out there. And we said, okay, we'll add you into the pile of stuff that we've already added into this project. And they started, we started working the IGA with them in August, and, um, they finalized all our exhibits in November. It took them a little while to do that, um, and so that's why we're here before you today. So just as a quick reminder of what we're all doing, Denver Water is financially responsible for all the stuff in blue, so all the streets gape around their side. We're responsible for all the stuff in yellow, which is pretty much Twenty-Ninth Avenue plus a, plus a little bit of stuff along Fenton. And then Edgewater's going to pay for all the stuff on their side of, of Twenty-Ninth Avenue. And then Wheat Ridge Sanitation District, this is all they're doing. There's just one little piece of sewer main that's apparently got some issues. They're actually upsizing it to a twelve-inch main to handle future growth and stuff. So, um, they've got this one little piece of sewer main just west of Gray Street that they need to replace. And then Edgewater's going to replace, um, water main from Kendall Street all the way over to, um, Gray Street also. So the funding partners on this, based on the bids that we received last July that we rejected and we're trying again on, uh, but based on those, we've got just under two point seven million dollars in city budget. Those are the shares of all the individual folks. Wheat Ridge Sanitation District's got a pretty small share because they're, they're part of the project's pretty small, and we think our share is going to be, um, a little less than half of this whole thing. And we decided to rebid it because we were trying to avoid some things that we thought were going to be a problem for the neighbors and, and some, some remobilization impacts. The Dry Utilities still haven't relocated their facilities, so we're still trying to get those guys out of the way. We just met with Excel again today. They've not even started yet. Um, we're a little frustrated there. And then we, we sort of repackage some things to try to provide better direction for the, for the, for the contractors. So we're hoping to get, oh, and Edgewater didn't have any money in eighteen, but they do in nineteen, so we're trying to fit that in also. So we're trying to get better stuff. We, we put this project out for bid. We advertised on Verbin Nineteenth. We actually opened bids next Tuesday, and then we hope to come to you in January to award the construction contract. It'll either be the fourteenth to the twenty-eighth, depending on how quickly we can evaluate bids during the holidays. Um, construction would probably start in the spring, probably March timeframe or something like that, just avoid some of the winter weather and stuff, and we'd be done by, by the end of the year in twenty-nineteen. So that's really all I've got on that one.
Thank you very much. Um, I will, uh, open it now. I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this item. If there's anyone in the public here tonight who would like to speak on that, you may do so at this time, and I don't see anyone coming forward, so I'll open this up for questions from council. Not too curious tonight, so anyway, uh, Ms. Duran, a motion is in order on item number five.
I move to approve resolution number six-nine dash two-zero-one-eight, a resolution approving an agreement with the Wheat Ridge Sanitation District regarding Twenty-Ninth Avenue Street improvements.
Second.
Uh, motion by Ms. Duran, second by Ms. Hoppy. Uh, is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Hoppy, would you please introduce item number six?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number seventy-two dash two thousand and eighteen, a resolution accepting the resignation of council member Monica Duran and thanking her for her contributions to the city of Wheat Ridge. A resolution accepting the, uh, whereas council member Monica Duran was elected to the Colorado House of Representatives on November sixth, two thousand and eighteen to represent Colorado and House District Twenty-four, and whereas council member Duran tendered her resignation to the mayor and city council on November eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen with an effective date of December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, and whereas council member Duran was elected as District One City Council Member in November of two thousand and fifteen. And whereas council member Duran served on the Wheat Ridge Planning Commission, the Wheat Ridge Carnation Festival Board, represented the city on the Colorado Municipal League Policy Committee, and was involved with the Wheat Ridge Partner in Faith. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado hereby accepts the resignation of council member Duran, effective December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, and be it further resolved that the city council of city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado also expresses its gratitude for Ms. Duran's significant contributions to the city of Wheat Ridge organization and community, and wishes her the best of luck in her new role as Colorado representative for District Twenty-four. Done and resolved this tenth day of December, two thousand and eighteen.
Mr. Dahl, uh, do, uh, should I ask for a motion on this, or, or is that good for a motion, and we should ask for a second?
Uh, yes, you should ask for a motion to approve resolution seventy-two, twenty-eighteen.
Um, Ms. Hoppy, can you give me a motion to approve, uh, resolution seventy-two, series twenty-eighteen?
I move to approve resolution number seventy-two dash two thousand and eighteen, a resolution accepting the resignation of council member Monica Duran and thanking her for her contributions to the city of Wheat Ridge.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Um, let's have some discussion on the motion. Mr. Ann.
Can I just make in addition to, um, the list, I also served on the Wheat Ridge Fire Board, which I didn't see that on there. It's very important to me.
Motion to amend the?
Yes, a motion to amend, um, my resolution.
Do we have, um, do we have a second on the amendment?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the amendment. Do we have discussion on the amendment?
Thank you for your service.
Oh, you're so welcome.
Will the clerk please poll the council on the amendment?
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, so we have amended the motion. Now we are back to the main motion. Do we have discussion on the main motion? Mr. Pond?
Uh, well, thank you so much, Monica, for all of your work. We obviously, I personally wish you the best, uh, at this, at the state. Um, I think in your previous emails, you've promised to stay in touch and, uh, and I'm sure we, uh, would love to hear from you, um, along the way, and, um, I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to congratulate Monica on her win and, uh, appreciate the hard work that it takes to be down at the Capitol, and I've spent some time down there myself, and I can tell you, it's, it's not exactly always the, the funnest place to be, but I appreciate your willingness to trudge through that, uh, drudgery for us, and, uh, appreciate, uh, your service for the city of Wheat Ridge and the Wheat Ridge Fire Board.
Thank you.
Mr. Ann?
I just wanted to say, um, I, I know you have a letter. I think this letter was read into, right? Correct? But just want to thank the citizens of Wheat Ridge. Uh, thank them so much for their support, not just, um, in District One, but their support in my new venture, and I will be representing them in a different way. I want to thank them all too for reaching out and sending emails, asking me to continue serving in District One until November. I really appreciate that. It means a lot to me, and, um, it's just really difficult to serve two masters, and I'm just going to be serving you in a different capacity, and I'm grateful for the opportunity, and thank you all for, um, the last almost four years. It's been a great opportunity and a great, uh, experience, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppy.
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Ann for being my counterpart in District One. We started at the same time, and right off the bat, we, um, immediately agreed to work together, and, um, in which we did, we had discussions on several things, and, um, very specifically, all of our appointments. We had very long discussions about those, and, um, we were able to, um, always find a, a place to come together, whether we agreed or agreed to disagree, so thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Dozeman?
Thank you. Uh, I also want to congratulate you, Monica, on your win, and I wish you the best of luck, and I hope that we still have your ear when you're up on the Capitol, so.
Absolutely. Thank you. You still have my ear.
Ms. Ann, I'd like to congratulate you also. You, um, have, have been a very faithful, uh, council member and, and good for the district and represent me in the district, and I appreciate that, and I am glad to see you going downtown to our state Capitol and continuing to represent our, our citizens, so I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
There being no further discussion, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay. Who did I have for number? Do we have our number seven, Zach? Uh, we'll move to item number seven. Mr. Urban, would you please introduce item number seven?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Buckle up, this is going to be a minute. Title of resolution number seventy-three, a resolution accepting the resignation of city treasurer Jerry DeTulio and thanking him for his contributions to the city of Wheat Ridge. Whereas city treasurer Jerry DeTulio was elected as the Jefferson County Treasurer on November sixth, two thousand and eighteen, and whereas city treasurer Jerry DeTulio tendered his resignation to the mayor and city council on November twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen with an effective date of midnight on January seventh, two thousand and nineteen, and whereas Mr. DeTulio served on the Wheat Ridge City Council from nineteen ninety-five to two thousand and five, and again from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and fifteen, and whereas Mr. DeTulio served as mayor of, of Wheat Ridge from two thousand and five to two thousand and thirteen, and whereas Mr. DeTulio was elected as Wheat Ridge City Treasurer in November, two thousand and fifteen, and whereas Mr. DeTulio served on the Board of Trustees for the Wheat Ridge Police Pension Fund, the Jefferson County Community Development Advisory Committee, the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority, the Wheat Ridge Business District, the Urban Drainage and Flood Control Board, the Metro Mayor's Caucus, the Wheat Ridge Rotary, and was active in many other community organizations. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Wheat Ridge hereby accepts the resignation of city treasurer Jerry DeTulio, effective midnight on January seventh, two thousand and nineteen. Be it further resolved that the city council of the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado also expresses its gratitude for Mr. DeTulio's significant contributions to the city of Wheat Ridge organization and community, and wishes him the best of luck in his new role as Jefferson County Treasurer. Done and resolved this tenth day of December, two thousand and eighteen.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve resolution seventy-three, series two thousand and eighteen?
Uh, motion to approve resolution number seventy-three, series two thousand and eighteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second for Ms. Hoppy. So, um, do we have discussion on the motion? Ms. Hoppy?
I know that, uh, the city treasurer, DeTulio, is not here tonight, but I do just want to, um, say that I appreciate all that he did in our treasurer's office. Um, I think that one of the, uh, greatest contributions were, um, moving our monies into the C-Safe and getting us, um, you know, larger, um, returns on our investments, and then also the, the reports on our commercial corridors, because prior to having the information broken down into our commercial corridors, um, it really was kind of mysterious about, um, where our sales were coming from, where our major, um, tax, sales tax revenue was coming from, and, and so that really helped, um, create a clear picture so that we can, as council, make good decisions on, um, where we will invest our money into our commercial corridors, so I'd just like to say thank you to him for that.
Additional discussion on the motion? Ms. Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I also wanted to thank Jerry DeTulio for all of his hard work in Wheat Ridge. Um, not only has he been invested in our community as a public servant, but he has also been a teacher for, uh, special ed at Wheat Ridge High School for many years. Um, I've had the, uh, honor and privilege of working with him in many different facets throughout the city, um, and he's helped me kind of navigate the process of, um, being an elected official and also what it means to be, um, a volunteer in Wheat Ridge. He actually helped me get involved with several organizations, and so I just wanted to thank him for his service and for his stewardship, and, uh, best of luck at, in Jefferson County. Uh, you've done a phenomenal job in Wheat Ridge as our treasurer, and I know you'll do well there as well.
Additional discussion, uh, Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that, uh, Jerry's tenure here at the city is, uh, somewhat, um, unprecedented, and I think that's, uh, because of his ability to not only get things done, but do it in a way that, that works for the greatest number of people involved, and that does take, uh, a tremendous amount of skill, and, and I appreciate that he'll be applying those skills to Jefferson County, but I also can't help but feel a bit of a loss for the city and our, uh, ability to, uh, have the treasurer position be such an open and transparent, um, role, and I, I think Jerry brought that transparency and that, uh, work ethic to our, our city treasurer role, and I, I really think we're going to miss that, and I, I hope that we're able to find someone that can, uh, do half the job that Jerry did in that role, and that's just one of the roles that he's served us. Um, and the, the fact that he was able to keep coming back and, uh, be re-elected tells us that he had his finger on the pulse of the citizens, and he was able to, uh, navigate the difficult issues within the city over the past, uh, twenty-three some odd years that he's been in service for us. So it's our loss and the county's gain, and I, I really appreciate all the, the hard work and the, uh, the standard that he's set for elected officials in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Pond?
Um, well, amongst all of the former titles and, and duties, uh, I, I know Jerry's a, is an avid, uh, viewer of Channel Eight, so he's, he's either watching or will be watching this rerun. Thank you. Also, um, I think someone who I've always admired, uh, his, I think, boundless enthusiasm and energy for the city of Wheat Ridge. Um, I think it was stated earlier that, you know, we, we never, we didn't always agree on everything, but, uh, I, I always knew, and he always showed his commitment to the city and, um, his willingness to, to work hard for it, and I've looked up to that and, um, and, uh, and, um, and always, always admired that, and I, I, uh, I believe he will bring that same enthusiasm, um, to the, uh, to the county, and I know that he will, um, stay active and, uh, and care for us along the way.
Any additional comments from, from council? Well, I would like to, um, to add my voice of congratulations to Mr. DeTulio once again, a, uh, a citizen of District One, a long, longstanding member, has gone on to additional electoral office in our, in our county, and he's done, he's done some great work in our city and is, and is a dedicated public service, and I wish him the, the best of luck, thank him for his service, and, uh, send him off with, um, with our best wishes. So, thank you, Mr. DeTulio, if you're tuning in tonight. So, um, may I have, uh, let's see, are we at the, are we at the motion? We were discussing the motion, so is there further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you very much. That concludes our active agenda, and we will now go to city managers' matters.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder for city council and our citizens, we have the open house this Wednesday for our neighborhood revitalization strategy. It's from, again, Wednesday from five-thirty to eight at the Wheat Ridge Recreation Center. There's going to be numerous opportunities for the public to provide input on what they want to see in Wheat Ridge for the next decade or so. So please come out if you're available. Again, five-thirty to eight. You can come at any time during that time period and give us some of your opinions and comments. Thank you.
Thank you. City attorneys' matters, Mr. Dahl?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Thank you very much. Elected officials' matters, Ms. Dozeman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to remind the public that the Wheat Ridge Chamber of Commerce Christmas party is Thursday, December thirteenth, from five-thirty to eight-thirty at The Grange. So they said to come enjoy food and beverages, silent auction, and if you can provide any items for the homeless, please bring that by as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ann, anything tonight?
Nothing besides. Thank you so much, and I hope I can continue having meetings here, I think on Saturdays for District Twenty-Four. Mayor?
We'll negotiate on that.
Already negotiating, huh?
Very, very good. That's, that's right. Mr. Urban?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pond?
Nothing this evening.
Ms. Hoppy and?
Nothing this evening.
Nothing this evening? Well, I would, this is our last meeting before, before Christmas, and I would like to wish everyone, oh, well, our last council meeting.
Oh, yeah.
We will have a study session, and I, I think I'm getting close there. But anyway, I'd like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and hope they have a holiday season. Please be careful of the, of the young people and children. The, the streets are dark and may become slippery at some times, so please be careful when you drive. I want to thank all, everyone for being here, and if there being no further thorough business, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.
Is that like the record for the shortest meeting ever?